And we're going to start with agency presentations and Melbourne will be first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With your permission, I have a little bit of a verticality issue. Would it be okay if I sit in chair?
Absolutely.
Thank you. My name's Mike McNeese. I'm the city manager for the city of Melbourne and I'm, I guess, the icebreaker, the cutting edge of what is going to be a unified presentation that will include each of the cities on this issue of CRAs and have just a few introductory comments. First of which is to say thank you to the county commission for giving us the opportunity to participate in this forum. There's nothing that we like better than really sitting down together to try to work out the issues that we're facing. And this is certainly one of the ones that has had a lot of energy in it and for a significant length of time. And I think about if someone were to come from outer space to observe this discussion and where, if they were going to come from outer space, where else would they come, of course, but to Brevard County? But they might see a room full of really well-intended, public-spirited people looking at the same set of facts and coming up with very different conclusions about what the next step should be. And they might wonder, how does that happen? And as I think about that, I think one of the things that leads to that is very different perspectives. I think clearly, when you look at the CRAs and the revenue that goes to them and the tax increment that peels off to them from this building, you clearly see a zero-sum issue. You have budget issues, you have road funding needs, you have issues that you're trying to face and you're looking for every resource you can find to put those dollars to work to solve your issues. When you look at the CRAs from the city's point of view, however, it's a very different question because the cities are seeing the leverage value of the CRAs, they're seeing the investment that's driven, the business and the employment opportunities that are driven by the CRAs and the overall community vitality that is driven by the CRAs. And let me explain that perspective issue to you using two examples. One of them is Cocoa Beach plans to build a municipal parking garage to serve their commercial district. That debt service on that parking garage in their CRA, give or take, will be $350,000 a year. Now, if we just cut it down the middle and say that's half county increment, half city increment, Brevard County's piece of that, so to speak, is that $175,000. Now, clearly, that $175,000 would fill a lot of potholes. It would pave maybe a quarter of a lane mile of road, something that you desperately need, it would pay for maybe two or three county employees for a year. So it's real money. No one argues it's not real money. But when you're the city of Cocoa Beach, it's not a $175,000 question. That parking garage for the city of Cocoa Beach represents an enormous boon to their commercial sector, their tourism sector, their downtown businesses, their employment base, their quality of life, far beyond anything you could count as $175,000. And you add their part, $350,000, the ripple effects of that are enormous over time, well into the many millions of dollars of benefits. So it's a much more important issue to the cities than just that $175,000. It's not a zero-sum game, it's a 175 versus millions of leveraging impact. Another example I'm going to use, because it's close to home for Mayor Meahan and I, is the Highline Apartment Mixed-Use Project that was recently approved in Melbourne. This has gotten a lot of attention, it's got critics, it's got fans. Well, here's how that will work for the city of Melbourne. The debt service that will fund the money that will support that project is about $175,000 a year. Now, say the county's increment there is half of that, it's really a little less than half, but let's say it's $80,000. So we're talking about $80,000. There's your potholes, there's your little bit of a lane mile of road repave, that's probably one mid-level employee for a year. It's real money. To the city of Melbourne, that $80,000 drives immediately nearly $30 million of private investment in our downtown. So if you just measure the direct dollar-for-dollar return on investment, that's a $30 million investment in our downtown, the ripple effects of which, through our commercial district, for long periods of time, for 20, 30, 40, 50 years, are enormous, almost impossible to really measure accurately. So that perspective issue, I think, is really important. To the county commission, it's $80,000. It's some work that you could do with that money and it's gone. For the city of Melbourne, it's a $30 million investment that will revitalize and transform our downtown for the next 50 years. So I think one of the reasons this conversation has been difficult is that we both, I think, can do a better job really hearing each other. Now, the other twist to the Highline project, and I think this is very little understood, and this is the core of the beauty of the CRA, and somebody might throw a brick at me for using that term, the beauty of the CRA, but from the city's point of view, without that $30 million of private investment in the downtown Melbourne CRA, that money that goes to pay the debt service never exists in the first place. So you can't use it for something else. Because if that developer doesn't put his $30 million into that project, it never exists. It's actually his tax money that goes to fund the debt service, to subsidize that upfront piece of it that we're, which is about a little over a million dollars that we're paying into. And the beauty of it also is, in the second year, the tax money coming in from that project will be more than the debt service. So it completely self-funds and without that project, doesn't even exist. So that money's not available to fill a pothole, it's not available to hire an employee, it literally doesn't exist without that $30 million of public investment. That doesn't exist without the CRA. And so that's, we have two objectives here today. One is, each of these elected officials here have come to help you see the CRAs through their eyes. How do they, what do they mean to the cities? Why are they so important? Why haven't the cities just said, you know, fine, however you want to do it is fine with us? Well, because these things are critically important to the revitalizing and then developing their cities into the future. That's why they're here. They're here and we have a presentation that we'll walk through to help give you representative samples of these issues in each of the CRAs, or not all of them actually, but in some of the CRAs, that mostly mayors and vice-mayors and the elected officials that are here, they want you to see this issue from their point of view. That's the first objective. The second objective that we have is to shift this conversation, if we can, from being one that looks like a tug-of-war, where there's a dollar in the middle and both sides are pulling as hard as they can, because lord knows, we both need those dollars. But we shift that conversation from a tug-of-war to a problem-solving exercise, where we look at what are the benefits of the tool of the CRA? What are the issues that the county is trying to solve by making adjustments to the CRA process? And how can we work together so that we're not having a zero-sum conversation, but that we're maximizing the use of our resources that we have and our money and the tools that we have to accomplish the things we need to? That's what all these elected officials are here and they're going to do the talking. You're not going to listen to the hired guns. We want you to hear from the elected official. So with that, the only other thing we want to do before we get to the talking through sort of the specifics of how these elected officials see their CRAs, we have a little bit of information about just the mechanics of the CRA process, how it works, how it's set up, what it's intended for, that I believe, John Tocanich, who's there he is.
Mike, before we do that, can you, for the people that are watching, can you give us your name and who you represent?
Oh, I'm Mike McNeese, city manager for the city of Melbourne.
Thank you. And John?
I'm not vertically challenged, but I am, but I am health-challenged today, so I want to apologize in advance. I have been on antibiotics for several days, so I assure you, I'm not contagious. I just feel like, well, like the budget process does, I'm sure. I just want to go over-
John, can you, your name and address of who you represent?
Sure. John Tocanich, City of Cocoa, city manager, 65 Stone Street, Cocoa, Florida. Just the basics, and some of you may, this may be very familiar to some of you, but for some of you, maybe the first time you're seeing some of this. CRAs, they are special funding districts. It's a, it's a decision, it's a partnership between county and the cities, you know, to make strategic long-term investment decisions in areas authorized by statute. First and foremost, they are created for the special purposes of addressing, promoting, facilitating the redevelopment of areas that have been designated, where there's been a finding of necessity, there's been, it's a data-driven process. And that data has suggested that those areas are falling behind in comparison to other areas in a community. So there's a number of conditions, there's like nine different conditions and you have to meet two of them, there's also slum. So it's a very data-driven process in the Community Redevelopment Act of Florida. So it uses the tax increment financing, and that's, I know it's a big, you know, everybody's like, everybody's probably familiar with it at this point, but that's the primary funding mechanism, where that's the partnership, the county, the city, the taxing authorities coming together to leverage their resources, targeted within, say, just say this is the redevelopment area, to target those resources that are generated from within the area back into that area. Again, I mentioned earlier, the local government, the city and the county must approve, you know, we're a charter county, since 1994, there are three that predate that, but they must approve the finding of necessity. So if former county commission evaluated the data that was presented and the conditions that were presented, and they said, yes, these meet the conditions as established in the statutes for the purposes of this area is suffering from conditions, we'll say, dissimilar to other areas surrounding it, and there's conditions of blight or there's conditions of slum. So the local government process, after the county approves that request to create a CRA, the local governments, they go out, they hold community meetings within the community, and then they hold public hearings to adopt their redevelopment plan and to create the CRA district, or they create the CRA district. But at the end of the day, it's the county that delegates, in this day and age, in our county, that delegates the authority to the city for the purposes of creating a CRA. There's three CRAs that predate that process. The CRA board is designated, you know, by virtue of the governing body, who you've delegated the authority to, and then they adopt the plan and you are provided that plan. In terms of implementation, it's a special, it's a dependent special district that's created by the local government. It's, in most instances, it's budgeted as a special fund, similar to a stone water utility fund or a construction fund, for those that have a blended unit of government and where there's like, the commission sits on the board and then you have maybe two other members on there. It's reported in the, in our CAFERS in terms of, as a, it's combined unit of government, if you will, and it's reported and it's not separately reported. But they are audited annually. It's a requirement of the statute, they are audited annually. And then we must provide that annual report of activities and the financial statements that we provide by March 31st of every year. The same laws apply to CRAs in terms of sunshine, the meetings are posted, the public's invited to come in, the public entertains, you know, provides testimony or they, as the CRA boards discussing a matter, you know, any member of the public that's affected, you know, or any member of the public can come in and say, I'm not sure about this, I don't like that, or maybe we should be doing this, have we considered this? The public is part of this process. This is not a process that's done in a vacuum or in a back room where the CRA board meets and there's no opportunity for public engagement, participation. And so, so again, the same laws apply to the CRA, sunshine's, ethics, and so the funding. And this is where it really, this is where the rubber meets the road. Once the district is created, you have a base year, and that freezes the value. We'll just, for argument's sake, you know, well, there, actually, there's an example, so we won't even go for, there's an example, we'll go to the next slide. So it's, so you basically have the base year, then you have the total assessed value for the district in the base year, that's considered your base value. Any value increase, property, the tax value will increase, is then, so you have your base year, then you have an increase, the tax increment that both, you know, because two things comprise the CRA budget. One, the certification of taxable value, our DR420 TIF, and then two, the milage process. So as the local governing body sets the milage and as the county sets the milage, you take those two together and it determines what's the value of the, you know, of the CRA's revenues. Okay? And so, but then we have to back off like we all do in local government, we only budget at 95%. So the CRA increase in value, their tax increment, increment, as projects come online, they're constructed, they hit the tax roll, and that increases the value and that gives more money to be leveraged towards other projects that are consistent with, have to be consistent with, their redevelopment plan. There's a statement on here, you can read it. They have been mended over 30 years to include the charter counties approving the creation, you know that. There's legislation out there right now, and I know several of you are very aware of that legislation, and there's a good possibility that legislation's going to pass this year, which may provide the counties some additional assurances. Because one of the things I would like to say, and I want to go off script here, but I know at some of the meetings, a lot of people held up the Miami Dade Grand Jury Report, and they used it as an indictment on Brevard County's CRAs, and it was a very unfair characterization because there's 29 recommendations in that grand jury report. And if not, I would, I would surmise that most of them, if not all of them, did not apply to Brevard County's CRAs. I mean, I don't know many CRAs and I, with my colleagues, that don't have procurement, follow the procurement policies of the governing body in which they are, were created by. There was ethics problems. I mean, that report was specific to what was happening in Miami Dade. It was not an indictment on all CRAs, and it did, the title is worthy, "The Good, The Bad, The Questionable." Well, I think the legislature that, along with the Florida Auditor General, is looking at this issue to increase accountability, increase transparency, increase some of the reporting requirements, and look at some of the other issues. Here's that example I was talking about, about me having to, my, we'll use Satellite Beach. They started off with $124.6 million in 2002 as their base value. In 2016, 2017, their tax value was $251 million. So the difference between the base value and the total taxable value 2016 is the TIF value, the tax increment value. And against that, against that value, you apply what the county adopts as a militrate and you apply what the city adopts as a militrate. And then you bring it forward, you do the 95%, you know, required, you know, for budgeting purposes, and the total TIF available to Satellite Beach was $1.5 million. So there still is, I mean, and I think it's important, because it goes back to what, you know, I want to echo what Mike said, one, that thank you for being here today and the opportunity to discuss this, but two, but for the leveraging of investments, we will never know how much that area would have increased in value if we did not reinvest in that area. So there's no guarantee that Satellite Beach, you know, their CRA would have gone from $124.6 to $251.4 million. It's because of the investment tool. It is a critical local development partnership, but it's an investment tool to reinvest, again, if this is the CRA, this circle, to take the resources, both parties, to reinvest, to try to bring those areas up and to level the playing field. Because at the end of the day, as a community, and we do a lot to promote economic development, quality of life, I mean, environmental issues, but at the end of the day, we're only strong as our weakest link. And what does this say to people that are visiting or prospects that are coming in to relocate their companies, if they drive through an area and they say, well, wow, if a community's not going to take care, take care of their own, why would I locate here, potentially? Because what happens if, you know, what happens if, like, you know, say Titusville, Knight Enterprises left? That's a huge impact to Titusville. That's a huge impact. And that starts, that could start that cycle of disinvestment and decline, because if one employer leaves and another one leaves that's in that supply chain, I mean, it really affects that. So these are your CRAs in Brevard County. I know you have this, I know the county manager's put together a very detailed sheet, a spreadsheet, I believe that he's provided to all of you, and it identifies all the CRAs, the, I think the 13 that are included in a future exhibit, as well as there's the three that are pre- pre-charter. And in addition to the year created, the potentially year ending, it also has the city amount, contribution, the investment, and it's, I shouldn't say investments, the contribution, that's what it is, it's an investment, the county investment, and then what's the outstanding debt service for each of those? I mean, we see out of, out of all those up there, there's three that don't have any debt service at this point in time. So with that, I think now's the time, we're going to turn it over to the elected officials to discuss, and there's slides up here, you know, and they can discuss their individual projects. Do you want me to sit over here and flip it for you?
Yeah, would you mind?
Yeah. Okay, so.
Good afternoon, I'm Walt Johnson, mayor of Titusville. I live in Broad Street on, in Titusville. I have some examples here of exactly what these two gentlemen have been talking about. These things corroborate exactly what they're saying. You have up there two, actually three pictures, but the top two, the one on the left, and I realize you can't see quite clearly with that, but that's what Titusville looked like after, we didn't have Knight Enterprises leave, we had NASA stop the Apollo program and lost thousands of jobs and the downtown area just took a dive for, I don't know, six or seven years. Had it been left that way, we would have been continuously, or would continue to have a downtown that nobody wanted to go to and just dilapidated. I don't know if you can see it up there, but there's, in addition to the spaces, there's a car lot and there's trailers and all kinds of things. Due to the CRA money, we were able to acquire those properties, which is actually behind the downtown stores on US-1, and create what we call the commons area, parking area. That was an inspiration to people. Things were starting to look up at that point, but people were still questioning whether Titusville was just going to stay in that condition and, or not, and they weren't interested. A lot of them, as has already been mentioned, came in, if they see something like that, they don't stay around very long. So it inspired the businesses downtown, as you can see on the right picture there, to invest in their buildings. And that was the start of things getting very much better in Titusville. Without the CRA, it just wouldn't have happened. What we did was, as is mentioned before, is leverage the future revenues from the TIF money to be able to buy that, those properties. Otherwise, the city would not have had the money to do it and we'd have been in a real predicament. Want to go to the next picture? This is another perfect example of what can be done by leveraging the money from the CRA. Two things happened here, and it's another reason it's a great example. This is actually an environmental pond that filters 400 acres of the downtown area of stone water coming into that pond and being filtered, and it also has a system, which I frankly don't quite understand, but they add alum to the water and solids drop out and then something is underneath there that scrapes it out. So the water is not only filtered, but it's treated, and that is a major improvement in what, from that area was going into the, into the Indian River Lagoon. But with that, again, by leveraging the money, we created a pond and a park, and that park is now part of the Spacewalk of Fame. This is a picture before they put all the pylons with the names of astronauts and so forth. So it's not any pleasant for the locals to be there, but it actually draws people in that are in the area to come and see the monuments on that, on that area. There has been a total amount of money, let me see, so I get the numbers right here. The total was $2,727. However, the CRA only had to leverage $600,000 and the rest was paid by partners, including EPA, St. John's River Water Management, Florida Communities Trust Forever Grant Program, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and Florida Department of Transportation. Again, without that initiating money, nothing would have happened, we wouldn't have had something like that. And if you look up in the corner there, you'll see part of the picture that was on the, can you go back to the previous one for just a second? Yeah. The previous slide? No, that's the next one. Down on the bottom there, you see a condominium that, had we not done the aforementioned things, would definitely not have been there. It was pleasant-looking, that was, that lot had been marketed for years and years, but went nowhere. When things started happening and looking better, private enterprise came in and put that up. So, and that was a big boon to the TIF. Obviously, the money and taxes that comes into the community from that is incredible boon to the area. Last one is investing and leveraging downtown. This is another example, this happens to be a new one that just is going up there, but the downtown needed some help to get their facades and their front, their buildings looking better. The facade program has put $430,000 into grants since 2008, and it has resulted in investments of $1,343,000, and that's a three-for-one investment return. The examples, again, are, as this gentleman had said, that money would not be there except for TIF money. I mean, the projects would not be there and consequently, the new, the new taxes that are coming in would not be there except for the TIF money. So it's vital to cities and we continue with other projects and as our town grows, so does the need to inspire people to come in and take some of the old buildings and create new buildings. And all of that creates new jobs. And so you can't quantify that, but new jobs also results in new houses, and that's other taxes that aren't in the downtown area, so that's something that we all share as the governmental organizations, yours and ours, share in that boom that is coming in. So again, we'd have none of that except for the CRAs. Thank you.
Do you have questions?
Sure.
Do you want to do that after, or?
No, I think it's appropriate to ask questions as they arise. Mr. Tobias, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. I appreciate that detail. On your slide, I just want to understand this correctly, since 2008, $430,000 of TIF money, and I understand that you're on the ones predating this, so, you know.
Yeah, well, no, this is, this is, as I said, this is a recent one, but that's not-
But, but I'm sorry, you're in one of the, you're in one of the CRAs that predate.
Oh, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
But I thought, so there's not anything we can do, I'm just trying to get a better understanding and try to treat everyone fairly. So you've spent 400, or, sorry- understanding and try to treat everyone fairly. So, you've spent 400, or sorry, the CRA has spent $430,000 on facades?
I'd like to think of it as invested $430,000.
Thank you. Invested in private, for-profit businesses?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So, public money went to businesses that are there to, I just want to be 100% clear. These are grocery stores, and doctors' offices, and law firms, and it looks like surgical centers is the one that you have here. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
But remember what I said before. That building is now going to be filled with doctors. They're not going to live downtown necessarily. They can live elsewhere in the city. Those properties that they are building homes on or buying homes creates more taxes coming into the city and the county. So, there are others. And of course, all the things they buy to go in that house. So, that's what economic development, and that's what redevelopment is. And I am familiar with economic development. I did it for eight years professionally. Thank you. Any other questions, sir?
Anyone else? Next.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Tom Price. I'm the mayor of the city of Rockledge. And CRAs are kind of hard to get behind. I understand that as a businessman. I'm certainly not a lifetime politician. I've been in business for 30 years. When I ran for office, you always have this white noise behind you. There's government waste, CRAs go after the CRAs. And I heard all that white noise behind me. And it was, it was, once you get into office, and as a politician, or as a mayor or city councilman, then you start looking for this waste, and you start trying to understand what a CRA is, because, believe me, I'm in the private sector. I have no idea what a CRA is. Nobody ever offered me any money for my business. But once you get in there and you start looking for this waste, you come to find out that there really isn't a lot of waste. It's pretty tight, at least in the city of Rockledge. It's pretty tight. And what the CRAs have done in our city are absolutely amazing. They really are. We were fortunate to start our CRA in 2002, which was the start of the boom, if you remember. That wasn't planned. That just happened to be the time that we started our CRA. And our growth went through the roof. And then, of course, 2009 came along, and 2009, 10, and 11, it was, we pretty much went down in value. All the cities in Brevard County, even Brevard County, went down in value. But we kept investing. We stayed with it. We thought about it, you know, because we had a tight budget. Our revenues went down, and we thought about, maybe we should pull this money back from the CRA. And, but we decided not to. We kept investing in our city, and we spent $8 million at a time when not many other projects were going on, when we redeveloped Barton Boulevard. We changed the entire look of Barton Boulevard, the dynamics of Barton Boulevard, which we consider as our hub area for our city. So, we kept investing, and 2011 came along, 2012, and we were one of the first cities that started going back up in value. And we actually feel as if a lot of that has to do with our CRA because of what the investment we made during the bad times, and what they did for our city that brought people back into our city, brought businesses back in, and we were excited to see anything open up. It was a mom-and-pop operation. We didn't care. We didn't care about the big boxes. We were more concerned about the mom-and-pops than we were anything else. And if we could support that mom-and-pop by giving them $10,000, a maximum, to help them with their business, we felt fortunate that they were coming to our city in the first place and opening up a business. So, I got some other information for Rockledge perspective. On our, we believe our community redevelopment agency has performed its statutory function. We have definitely reduced and eliminated blight in our city. Is this my first one?
Yes, sir.
I kind of have to turn sideways to be able to see what I'm talking about there. Okay, this is our Barton Boulevard. Using public infrastructure projects to create momentum and private investment, the CRA, we acquired some redevelopment agencies. We required some redevelopment properties on Barton Boulevard, and we're putting them back out for bid to try to bring in business back into our Barton Boulevard. We've demolished structures that were blight, and a few other things we have done there. We have partnered with Brevard County with a shelter for the SCAT bus pull-off. Now, they have to skip because I did skip over mine. I want to talk about while I was still on Barton Boulevard, though. What we did here, we spent a couple hundred thousand dollars, $250,000 for the city. We thought this was important because it was blight on Barton Boulevard, and we took three of your county bus stops and consolidated them into one. And we spent, as a city, $250,000, and Brevard County or SCAT contributed $4,700 to that. We still today, we still today pay for the maintenance, annual maintenance of $8,500 a year. We felt like that was something we had to do as a city, even though Brevard County really did not participate with us with a large investment. But we actually partnered with Brevard County and made this, and did the right thing for Barton Boulevard with this bus stop. And we improved it. We improved it for the county, all the county residents, as well as our city residents. That was something very important that we did. Sky Zone. Sky Zone we brought into the city, and the reason they came into the city was because of our redevelopment district. We were able to partner with them. And we, yeah, we gave them $10,000, but we felt lucky they came into our city in the first place. They took an old Winn-Dixie that had been vacant for 10 years. They spent $2.5 million on this business, and I think it's only like 14% of the residents of Rockledge actually go to this. This is a destination. The entire Brevard County utilizes this property. This is a very successful business. They're doing very well. They're bringing people from Volusia County, from Orange County. They're bringing them into our city. They're spending money. They're paying, they're paying sales tax, which I think this is very important. And yes, we gave them $10,000, but we felt like we had a partnership with these guys, and we worked with them. They worked with us. They did some changes and some things that we really wanted the building to look like, to help Barton Boulevard, and it was a success. It's a very success even today. What's our next one? Scooters, US-1. DOT, FDOT came in about four or five years ago, and they rebuilt US-1, made it in six lanes through Rockledge. And I don't know how many millions of dollars they spent. But we spent a lot of money from our CRA on US-1 to help with landscaping and street lighting that we thought would benefit the city of Rockledge. And it really did. And that brought Scooters. Scooters came in, bought a dilapidated old credit union. They've been sitting vacant for a couple of years. They tore it down. They built this building here, and it's a great success. And yeah, we gave them $10,000. We thought that was important, that we partnered with them, and they spent $620,000 of their own money. But we felt like it was important, and it was very important to these guys that we worked with them, and that we supported them. And the $10,000 probably didn't make a big difference when they were spending $620,000, but it worked. It worked really well, and it's very successful. What's our next one?
John, can you go back to Barnes Boulevard?
Yeah, let's go to Barnes. I forgot that one. Barnes Boulevard. The only city road, the only road in the city of Rockledge that Brevard County owns. We've been, we tried for 15 years to get you guys to six-lane, four-lane this road, and you finally started it a few years ago. And it took $2 million to the city of Rockledge. We had to give you $2 million or help you and partner with you to help make this happen. We were happy to do it because that benefits our city. We feel as if. And we put our money where our mouth was, and the county stepped up, and they spent some money, and it's not done yet, but it's getting very close. And that's, that's our success right there in Rockledge, guys, is Barnes Boulevard. Barnes Boulevard has been where our growth is. It's where everything's happening, and that's why our TIF has risen so much in the city of Rockledge. You give us the most money of anybody else in Brevard County. You give us $605,000 a year. And that's because of Barnes Boulevard. Barnes Boulevard is where all the growth is. Of course, we're real close to Vieira, so that's making a lot of it happen, too. But we're very proud of Barnes Boulevard. We're very proud of what we've done down there. We're spending another $250,000 of our own CRA money down there with improvements, landscape improvements, sidewalk improvements, some privacy walls, and it's going to make a difference. The CRA has been a big deal for us on Barnes Boulevard. It's going to make it very successful. Now, keep in mind, guys, Brevard County gives us $605,000 a year. Our residents pay Brevard County $5,000,65,000 a year into the general fund. There's not another project in Rockledge that I know of, unless you guys can name it to me, that you guys spend money in Rockledge, other than the $605,000. And our residents are paying you $5,000, $5 million a year for it. So, I think that you're getting a bang for your buck with your $605,000 for what we're doing in Rockledge. And we are successful, and we expect it to continue to be successful. And as a businessperson that doesn't know much about government, I'm going to tell you right now, this is probably one of the best things that ever happened to Rockledge is our CRA. Thank you very much.
I would ask, excuse me, I would ask everybody to keep their emotions in check, please, because you guys can clap, and the next speaker might make everybody boo. So, I don't want to, I don't want to hear either one personally. So, just keep it to yourselves, and we'll just continue on an intellectual basis. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah. And thank you for talking about the public money that went to the private, for-profit businesses. My understanding is, and you laid it out, that CRAs were to deal with blight. Looks like you spent almost $8,000 on travel. So, my question would be, looking over your budget, where did folks travel, and what were the benefits to clearing out the blight?
We send a crew every year to the International Shopping Center Network that's in Orlando. We send basically our entire CRA board. And they go over there every year. They spend a couple of days there. And, I mean, they market, they talk to people, they bring people to our, I think that's how Sky Zone came to our city, probably how Scooters came to our city. The other shopping center, I can't think of what it's called. The other shopping, the grocery store, what's it called? The small German grocery store?
All of these.
All of these came to our city. So, that's what we do with our people. We send them around, and we have them shake hands, talk to people, hand out cards, represent the city of Rockledge.
And one follow-up. Looks like there are special events and promotional materials to the tune of $25,000. What, what are the CRA promotional events that went out, and how is that 25?
What that is, that's car shows, that's arts and crafts events that are in the districts themselves, promoting the districts.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? No other questions or comments? Okay, moving right along.
Welcome, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
What Mr. Price said, you could say the same thing about Cocoa. Cocoa, Rockledge, Melbourne, friends in Titusville, have, and all the other areas in the county that have CRAs. It's extra vital. First of all, my name, my name's Henry Parrish, Mayor of Cocoa. My family's been in central Florida here 193 years, since 1823, and we have a lot of experience in government. I brought up like a government family, who always debating, and somebody's serving somewhere, or have served, and we always kind of weigh what's going on. We measure things. I feel like, I feel like we've already addressed the CRAs several times over recent years, and I'm kind of mad to even be here, to be honest with you, because we're just, the board, commission here understands the numbers just as well as we do, and the benefits and the negatives. But, you know, you can see on this right here, you can see that our US-1 corridor, the 55-plus development. I'm 54 years old, so I'm like a year away from being eligible to go to this. And the way it's going, I'll probably be there pretty soon. But, you know, that's a benefit from it. Obviously, US-1, you know, US-1 was the, I call it the big dig. It was four and a half years of construction from DOT. They did a great job. It was actually passed, I think, 12 years ago. My former wife was the mayor, so, you know, let you know how fast that moved. But it's a beautiful road. And there's a lot of other things they've done. Mr. Tobias, if you want to ask me questions and numbers, you probably have to ask him, because today I'm not probably prepared for it. But I'll say this, so we can move on to the, you know, downtown Cocoa, historic Cocoa Village. If anybody's been here more than five years or 10 years, you know very well the reputation that Cocoa had, and the spillover from the blight and the crime and the, you know, and these areas we had, they were truthfully in the city and outside the city that we got credited with. So, as mayor, when I was elected, I was elected to come in and fix City Hall and redevelop our city, and in a big way. So, we started at a lot lower point. I'm not looking for an award, you know what I mean? But we started at a lot lower point than most people had to take their city over and move it. So, Mr. DeCange has come in and done a brilliant job, but we also reevaluated where we've been and where we're going. And, you know, we are the comeback city, and we're the comeback city in Florida for a lot of reasons. But number one is, one of the top reasons is the CRAs, and the effect it has, you know, caused in our city. It's very much like, it's a tool in a toolbox for us, and we've used the tool, I think, pretty well. Now, if you look at Cocoa Riverfront Park, Johnny got to look good. Underneath that park is a storm system drainage, like a square mile. It drains into different tanks, and some of it goes into the Indian River, which is considered dead, by the way, in front of us. Okay? Even with this system. You know, I think the whole project was like 3.2. I think we just paid it off ahead of schedule. But we have a lot of street projects. This is an old CRA, John, one of the old ones. But we've done a lot of street projects, numerous facade grants. I mean, it just goes on and on and on. I mean, it helped us revive the Cocoa Playhouse. I mean, in a big way. You know, we feel like it's the hub of the county right now. We know that Cathy's downtown is 30 miles away. That's a long way. You know what I mean? Titusville's is 15. Yes, it is. And, but we feel like we are the hub of the county. We were re-establishing, bringing Cocoa back to its potential, and a big part of that is the CRAs, okay? I don't want to bore you, because I know a lot of people want to speak, but then you go right next to the historic downtown that butts up to it, to the west side, and that's Diamond Square. That is one of the later, one of the newer CRAs. Like the downtown, it took us 30 years to start breathing life in it. I mean, we would have, we were battling the Today paper, honestly, in a big, big way in the old days. We were battling perception, image, you know? But when you look at the CRA, Diamond Square that's next to it, it was so dangerous to go in there at some areas. We, nobody wanted anything to do with it, not even the city. I mean, that's the truth. I went to school, in middle school there, and it was rough, 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 rough. But as time went on, you know, the white community, black community, yellow, green, brown, we all made a pact. We spent years. And what, you know what we did? We decided we were going to clean our whole city up. And this is a tool for that square mile or so, is to redevelop it. And so, we've been, we've done a lot of things in there. We've spent a lot of money. I think Stone Street's getting ready to start. We have a lot of street projects, a lot of, a lot of things that you, little minor things to change, you know? And truthfully, everybody knows, all aboard Florida, if and when, hopefully, when they name their fourth station, it'll be, guess what, in Diamond Square at Rosa Jones and US-1. In Diamond Square at Rosa Jones and US-1, which is the big, neat area. And they're conscious of what it will do for Diamond Square. But at the end of the day, I think everybody knows everything. We could probably just say 10 words and just go from person to person. The truth is, when you look at the county budget, I mean, you're under restrictions. I mean, I think you have a, you can only, what, tax more than 3% a year or less, whatever it is. I mean, you're getting choked out. You can look at your budget and see where all the money's going, you know? And you can look at dollars, dollars, dollars. And I'm a big guy for dollars. But guess what? I was brought in to fix City Hall and to represent the citizens, all the citizens of the great city of Cocoa and their needs. And money is important, but the residents are more important, really, okay? So, you know, we can keep talking, we can go to the next thing, which is the EDC, we can go to this and that, but the truth of it all is, you got to find a way to service all the residents. Okay? And the last thing I'm going to mention here is this, I appreciate letting me speak this long. I usually get cut off or yelled at.
You're done.
Thank you. But the last thing's this, you know, after all this stuff comes up, and we start, as a city, when you go to Tallahassee and you see what the mindset is up there, I can tell you right now, the county and the cities better be working together like a team. And that's the truth, okay? That's a warning, right? John knows. I hope you know. So up there is a different thinking. You know, there's questions I'm hearing from all different levels of Brevard County. People are asking me, why are the cities paying the same tax rate as the county residents? I mean, think about it. We pay probably, what, 62% or 65% of the freight, the cities of Brevard County. Okay? So I mean, I don't want any reactions from you, but there's all kinds of ways you can look at this, okay? So I wish you luck on your budget and what you can do, but you can't hurt the disadvantaged on the way. I just think it's not serving the residents that you're under. Thank you.
Thank you.
One I can ask or answer any questions.
Mr. Dabai.
Thanks, Mayor, I appreciate it. And I'm doing this exercise with all of our departments, I think it'd be remiss. On the US corridor one, it looks like 88% of your budget is a transfer to debt service?
That's correct.
It looks like the remaining 10% is salaries. So my question is, why, in order to write a check over to debt service, why are there any salaries associated with that?
Well, they still have to have an attorney, they still have to meet quarterly by the state.
You have legal, sorry, you have legal expenses down here as a line item?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm just speaking to the more than $11,500 in order to...
Because the three CRAs share in the expense for the redevelopment specialists. And so it used to be a much more equitable, you know, distribution, but at the end of the day, they meet quarterly and they still have a business of the quarter program. They go out and they do things. Yes, they have to, most of the money, or basically anything less, their expenses goes to the general fund. Because the reason why is, there was a $1.4 million note for the US-1 widening project that the CRA did not have the funds for. So the city...
I'm just trying to get to the salary. Are you aware that other CRAs don't have any salary expenses? So, you know, and they have projects that are currently in the works.
Correct.
So my question, again, with no projects in the works, that is a portion of an FTE, is what you're saying, that would cover the Diamond one as well?
That's correct.
Is that what it is?
But while you say there's no projects in work, there's still administrative responsibilities. We've got to prepare reports, and we've got to provide all that information to you, and also the resolution provides, and we're not even coming close to that, is that we will expend more than 25% of our TIF towards, you know, administrative expenses. And we're at 10%.
Anyone else? John, next.
Cocoa Beach.
I got invited to this meeting, but I didn't know I was going to be the speaker, but I heard that the elected officials are going to be the speaker, and I was asked to move up here, so here I am. I haven't seen these charts, so I'm going to talk and do what he wants with the charts, please. But everybody should have this fact sheet. It looks thick, but it's only a few pages that are... Mr. Dabai, do you have this in the manila folder there?
I can share.
Our city manager put this together.
Yes.
Okay, basically saying that voters, by ballot, established the CRA according to all the rules and stuff, and that was back in 2008. We started up the CRA. It's downtown only. We've invested about a quarter million dollars or so of our city funds to get it started up. Our tax year that we started based on was 2012. The CRA is for just the downtown, which is 7% of our total land area. It is, represents 10% of the tax base. If you look on the third page, it just has a little map that has the delineation of what that downtown CRA is in Cocoa Beach. And then the next page, as Mr. Mike McNeese mentioned, for us, the big deal for us is the parking garage. Downtown, consider it, that 7% of our land is the heart of the city. We qualified for all the things with the state criteria for CRAs and got approval by the county because we met all the blight and all the other categories. Basically, our downtown has heart disease. One of the biggest problems is we don't have adequate parking for the businesses to be able to build up and have places for people to park to make the city work better as the downtown. We're fortunate through the five-year, 10-year, 15-year plans, through FDFT and the A1A study and the TPO, to get improvements on A1A. They're actually working that now. It's a DOT project. It goes right through the heart of this downtown area. They're putting bulbouts in to do some traffic calming, also gives us a chance to put in some landscaping. We've got sidewalks now going in on both sides of A1A, which also lead to the downtown. Those are good things. We got the complete streets project that we had shovel-ready when the money was available a couple of years, three years ago, I guess it was, and then TPO approved us, and I think the county commission also, to go ahead and spend that money in Cocoa Beach, combine it with a bunch of money from our downtown, I mean, from our city, to do stormwater improvements. And then we started up a Main Street program, and we're funding that out of our city cofers. And then, like I said, that one page is basically the debt service on the parking garage. It goes through 2031. We'd be signing the notes, we'll be signing the bonds, we'd be responsible for doing the payback, we'd be counting on the CRA money in this scenario, and it would be paid off two years before our CRA sunsets. The rest of the package is letters from people that are either business people or our main seat director or other businesses in the downtown, basically giving their opinion that CRA is a good thing. So we are, knowing that we needed the new city hall, new police department, and a parking garage, we've integrated plan together. We've gotten the community through workshops to come together, and we have cited the police department and the parking garage on city-owned property, so it won't be taking away land from the tax base. It's already off the tax base because it's city property. But by putting that parking garage there, it's going to, basically, it's like putting a pacemaker in the heart of this patient in the city of Cocoa Beach, in the downtown, because that parking garage is going to enable the whole rest of the downtown to do better and be everything we want it to be, and it, you know, a little bit of trickle-over effect in the other parts of the city as far as tax value, that's the other 90%, that's already going up now. You get the benefit of those values going up today, next year, next year for that 90%. We're just asking that, well, the other thing about the parking garage is, because it's right there with our city hall and our police department, the patrons of the city hall, the city hall employees, the police employees can park there during the day, in the evenings, second purpose, in the evenings, the restaurants, the businesses, anything else downtown, that parking is available for them. On the weekends, when we have lots of traffic, I don't know if you've been in Cocoa Beach lately, but that'll help with the beach crowd parking and still have parking available for businesses in the downtown, where right now, if you go downtown on Sunday afternoon, everybody's just driving around in a circle like ants, looking for places to park, and it just clogs up the whole city. So I know Easter's coming, we really want to throw all our eggs in one basket and put the predominant 90, more than 90% of our CRA money through 2031 into the parking garage. And like I said, we need that pacemaker, keep patient healthy, and you get the benefit of a healthy patient in 2033 and all the tax increases between now and then for the other 90% and all of it after that. So keep this patient alive. I'd like to see some kind of agreement on paper that we're going to do what we say we're going to do. I feel that the commission would, I haven't talked to any of them, but I feel that they would sign off on whatever kind of agreement this county commission wants to come up with to lock us into this CRA. We already have our resident approval, the commission approval, as part of the public record. We really need this, and I think it's a good value, cost-benefit-wise, for the county overall.
Mr. Dabai.
Thank you, Mayor, and you did a great job if you just got drafted up to come here. My one question is, just, you know, looking at your budget, since some of that is general fund, it looks like you have almost $143,000 in professional services that is associated with this CRA, but that's all lists. My curiosity...
Okay, that piece, that's this year's budget?
Or we could do last year's budget, where you had $118,000. Either way, I don't know what professional services are based on the budget. That's just my question.
All right, we will, I guarantee you, the city manager's here, our CRA director's here, and instead of me guessing or him telling verbally, could do that now, or she could do that now, we'll get that in detail to you in writing and CC the remainder of the county commission. I have an idea of what that is, because I approved those budgets and I sat through those meetings, but I just don't want to misspeak.
Jim McKnight, city manager, city of Cocoa Beach. One thing, it's probably not good for my employment health, but I need to correct one thing Mr. Williams said, our base year is '08, not '12, which is very important, because we all know what happened between '08 and '12, and that was the plunge. So we kind of...
But we didn't pick, excuse me, we didn't set our official base year until 2012. I mean, we had the opportunity, we could have done it earlier, but we...
That's when it actually started going up again, was in '12. But I think our base year is '08, is it not? Yeah, we're '08.
Well, okay.
On that. Anyway, and that's our 25 years, and that's why it ends in '33. I just wanted to add one thing to it. I've worked for five governmental entities in my career in 38 years. 37 of those years have been Brevard County, and started with Brevard County in the early 80s, when the CRAs were being actually supported by Brevard County as something that could occur. Then I worked for Cocoa when theirs had already been started, and I started Rockledge. But the one thing I do know is Cocoa's a good example of the time it takes for the turn to really occur. I actually, as a teenager, worked in downtown Cocoa, cleaning floors in a doctor's office, and leaving there at night was a scary thing to do. That place had really, really gone downhill, and to go there today and see the vibrancy and the activity is an example of good things that occur. The Cocoa Beach, one thing I did want to point out, and I think you said that, Mr. Dabai, that there were no staff dollars used by the city of Cocoa Beach. Professional services, I think, were primarily as a result of what the startup costs were to get the plan done, which was all paid by the city of Cocoa Beach, being reimbursed back at the $20,000 level. But we will get you a specific answer on that and all the commissioners relative to that. Again, our one project, as Commissioner Williams has said, is the parking garage, and everybody, I'm relatively new, and everybody I've talked to asks one question in downtown Cocoa Beach. What are you going to do about the parking? I actually came to this meeting from a meeting about parking, okay, with some businesses. So we are putting, that's a good analogy that the commissioner has given you, we are putting all of our eggs in one basket. That's the most important basket for us. We're not taking other properties off the tax roll, as he has said, and it's helped us be an impetus to other projects that need to occur in the city of Cocoa Beach. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Comments?
Go to the next one. I did want to point out here, and it's in the packet, the city of Cocoa Beach is Minuteman Streetscape Improvement, has a total of $60,000 of CRA money in it, and we leveraged $5.1 million from nine other sources. So it was a small increment that has led to what I was going to think is going to be a changing project for the downtown when it's completed. Thank you.
In the near future.
If you don't mind, I'm going to start with our city manager to make a few comments, and then I'll follow up with a few, and we'll keep them brief so we keep moving on.
They like to leave everything to the hired guns. In Satellite Beach, we've got two projects to demonstrate for you today, and one of them is Pelican Beach Park. And this project, prior to 1986, the county actually managed and owned Pelican Beach Park, and at about an $80,000 a year cost, and that was primarily for the cost of the two park rangers that they employed there to charge for parking to get into the park. At some point, the city asked the county, said, hey, can we just take this over? And the county said, yes, but, you know, we still want to pay you for things like toilet paper and stuff like that. So they would pay us $8,500 every year to maintain that park. Until about 2007, we took over, we actually renovated the entire park with our CRA money, and that was at a, to a tune of $1.5 million. And in 2011, we took final ownership of the park. So now we are the deed holders for that property. That park is actually really, we have a lot of rentals there, we have a lot of pavilions, and we have a clubhouse, a lot of people hold their weddings there. But that clubhouse is rented out literally a year in advance for weddings. The rentals that we have at those pavilions, about 20% of those rentals are from non-city residents, and that's kind of hard to really even determine from there, because when people rent and they say they live in Satellite Beach, a lot of those people are actually from the unincorporated area of Satellite Beach between the city and Pineeta Causeway. So that, the number's probably a little higher. But we actually partnered with the county throughout this whole project, and making sure that the county was okay with the development, they helped us with the design, not financially, but, you know, from a staff perspective, and was with us the entire time. So we look at it, even though it's a CRA project, and the city managed that project, we still look at it as a joint project with the county. This is the next project in the city that we would like to demonstrate for you today, and this is Satellite Beach's Shell Street project. And this is actually a combination of a public project, basically a road and beachfront access project, in addition to a commercial facade grant project. In our city, we have had the facade grant program probably running for about eight years prior to me being there, and when I got there, I noticed that a lot of the parking lots were not done. So you have this beautiful facade and this old yucky parking lot with no stormwater. And stormwater is a big issue in our city, because we're a beach community, not a lot of people want to use their property for a pond. The properties are small, it's difficult to do, and it's expensive. So to get people to put any type of impervious surface in there was really the point of our grant. So we increased the grant cost, or, I'm sorry, the grant size, to incorporate parking lots and stormwater facilities into the grant program. The first person that, the first property that came to do this grant was the property at Shell Street, and it's a commercial plaza that has businesses in it, including Sun on the Beach, I don't know if anybody's eaten there, everybody's eaten there at some point in their life, and Papa Gallo's, that's another one, everybody in Satellite Beach has eaten there at some point in their life. And both businesses really prospered from this project. So we did, we had to realign the street, first of all, basically to, and get right away from the property owner, to try to get the property, the street, a little bit closer off the dune line. And we also put in beach improvements, including pavilions, landscaping, curb and gutter. And we also took the last remaining private septic tanks out of the city and installed a sewer line. So the city paid for 25% of that cost, and then the CRA paid for the remaining cost of that sewer line. The businesses, the property owner, the... The businesses, the property owner, the original picture is here to the left on the bottom, and then they put a big pavilion on the back of the, on the businesses. And Papa Galas really took ownership of that project and expanded quite a bit. They've actually doubled in size in their seating capacity and completely remodeled their interior. And I think I just saw on Facebook they're hiring 15 new employees. So, it's really exciting to see them succeed so well. And I think, and they also built a little outside bar, which we don't really have in our city. So, now we have a place to go at night to have dinner and write and look right over the ocean. So, it's a beautiful project. We actually spent $400,000 of CRA funds to build this project, and 150,000 of that came from the Satellite Beach Women's Club as a donation. We also, with the commercial side of it, the property owner who is here today, there we go. Just hold on a minute. He invested $220,000 into the project, and he received a $65,000 facade grant and property improvement grant from the city. So, that, those are all the projects for the city, and he would like to speak after if you're accepting public comment later soon.
And I'd like to add, I'm Steve Osmer, the Vice Mayor for Satellite Beach. Keeping in mind, everybody's CRA has probably different goals, and everybody area is different. Obviously, we're a beachside community, quite different from Cocoa, Rockledge, and the Melbourne area. But something that's a little bit unique to us is our city is 96% built out. So, we're not going to get any more tax revenue from new houses. We're not going to get any more tax revenue from really new business facilities or buildings. So, we have what we have. So, things like when we talk about the facade grant is very important for us because, again, we're going to have to use existing facilities, existing buildings that we already have, fix those up so that we can keep the businesses, get new businesses, which in the end is going to equal more tax revenue. The other part about that is, is when I came into office, one of my big things is called ROI, right? Return on investment. And I'm sure, as all people here know, we need to get the best bang for our buck, get the most we can get out of everything we have. I'm sure, you know, a lot of people are relating CRAs to roads. I mean, that's kind of the topic that's going on here. It's not that we're not familiar with roads. I'm sure Palm Bay would be the first one to speak up and tell you about the road problems they have, right? Satellite Beach, for about the last three years, have been doing town halls, town meetings, and everything to talk about how we're going to fix roads. So, I understand the county's position with fixing roads, right? It's, again, it's not unique to the county as we are all suffering through the same type item, how we're going to do that. But again, the point I'm trying to make is that when we looked at our CRA projects, what we were trying to do is get the most we could in return for the, basically, the little amount of money that we could put into it. And I think that you've heard some great stories here about when you talk about people put in $100,000, $200,000, but they're getting millions and millions of dollars return on investment. That return on investment is really, you get a new business, new houses, new people that are paying more taxes. The benefit to the CRA is the county gets more revenue. The county is getting more revenue from all the CRAs. The more we fix up in our cities, the more money the county's getting. So, eventually, you know, when you look at, even if the CRA should run out, that will end a lot of the improvements. And I think one of the last things I'd just like to say is, I don't think anybody here can say that they've had a CRA and things have gotten worse. I can't think of anybody can talk about anywhere in their city that they've had a CRA and it's now worse now than when they started. Every place that's had a CRA has done improvements. Now, some are a lot bigger than others, but all those improvements, again, in the end, the return on investment means more money for the city and more money for the county. So, I always look at that as a win-win is what we're really coming down to. We're in the same business as the county. We need to get revenue. We need revenue to support our services. And the best way to do that is improve what we have. And the CRA just happens to be the vehicle that we're using right now to make that happen. And I think some of the last point they made out is, if we didn't have any of the CRAs, we really don't know where we would be today. We don't know how much more tax revenue we would really have without the CRAs. You can't really say, for example, how much that would be. But in the long run, again, I think CRAs are the vehicle, the vehicle that is not only helping the cities, but it's helping the county. And I know, we all need more revenue. I'd just like to dispel the whole roads CRA fight because that's not really true. I think the CRA is its own thing, and we all have problems with roads, and we all need to get those fixed. So, again, using the CRA is a teamwork between us, and I'd like to see us to keep using the teamwork to benefit both the county and the municipalities.
Mr. Tobias, you have the floor.
One quick question on your budget. It looks like, thank you very much, you returned $142,923 per Brevard County agreement. I just want to give you the opportunity to explain that.
We have a couple slides in a little while that goes in detail on that, so would you mind if we waited to get there?
We'll speak directly to the $142,923. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, John?
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name's Carol McCormick. I'm not vertically challenged, but my voice is challenged this afternoon. No offense to my good friend, Mayor Parrish, but I think the town of Palm Shores is actually the poster child for CRA. I don't know how many of you were around in 2002 and 2003, but when I was elected in 2003, no one actually wanted to live in Palm Shores, and no one certainly wanted to open a business there. Why? We were known as the town of nude line dancing, the adult video store, prostitution, drug, armed robbery. It was an embarrassment. When we passed our CRA, it was the best thing that could have ever happened to us because it allowed us to start tearing down and getting rid of the blight and the crime. The prostitutes used to stand in front of town hall, and we would have to call the sheriff's office and say, could you please move them a little further down either, north or south? We don't care which way. So, believe me, we have come a long way, but we could not have done what we did without the community redevelopment. The first slide you're going to see, and most of ours have been impacted with small businesses. Those are the people that we have been able to help. When we went through the three-year terror of a road widening, a lot of our small businesses were torn down. This building here was destroyed by Hurricane Jean in 2004. It was owned by a gentleman in Canada. It took us into 2008 until he would allow us to tear that building down. Now, we have 52 affordable homes that were completely sold out in three months, and we're very proud of that subdivision. That subdivision would not be there had we not been able to tear that down, and that is in our community redevelopment program. Next slide, please. This was the Blue Motel. When I became mayor, I had a hit list. The Blue Motel, the adult video store, you know, the crack mobile home parks, you know, this was my hit list of what can we, what can I do to make Palm Shores a place people want to live and where businesses want to be. When I was able to tear down the adult video store and the Blue Motel, it's now the home to Prestige Office Complex, five real estate companies, title company, property inspector. It's a beautiful building. We're very, very proud of it. The other building across the street was the, you can go back, that's all right, go ahead. This was our mobile home park. That was only the last one that was left, and we took a picture of it. This was where the letter carrier would not go to deliver the mail because of the crime. It is now BRPH Meridian Properties. That's the home office to two very well-respected companies. I had lunch with the chairman, and I asked him to look across the street. And I said, do you know what was there before? And he did not. And many of you might not have known what was there. But these are the type of situations that I was faced with of, how am I going to get anybody to want to move to Palm Shores? How am I going to attract business if I can't get rid of the crime, if I can't get rid of the blight? And speaking of blight, you recently, at your last meeting, under your consent agenda, did a settlement agreement with a property in Palm Shores, and this is how long we've been code enforcing them. This same property that you just came to an agreement with them to make them mandatorily connect to sewer. That is, that happened at your meeting on the 11th. So, we're not through with blight, but we're still fighting it. Next slide, please. These are new businesses that came to Palm Shores because they see it as a viable place to live and a viable place to work. It's a cleaned up, clean community. Cabana Shores is in their seventh year. They've been very successful. The Bistro, that used to be, for those of you who lived around here a long time, the little hamburger place that had a putt-putt golf right next to it. Well, when the road was widened, it took the entire frontage of that building, putting them out of business. It is now a restaurant again. Wawa, we're very proud. Ours was the first Wawa. It's not in the redevelopment zone, but would they have wanted to come to Palm Shores if we still had the reputation that we had back in 2002 and 2003? I doubt it. The Sunshine Bank, the same thing. Those people would not want to be in Palm Shores if they did not feel that it was a viable, thriving community. And we could not have done that without the community redevelopment. It's not possible. It has given us life, and our residents are so proud to say they live in Palm Shores. Is there another slide?
Yep.
Okay. Candlewood Suites, again, this is the opportunity that, and the new church, we have three churches now in Palm Shores. You think a church would have wanted to be in Palm Shores when the nude line dancing was going on? I don't think so. I don't think anybody would want to stay at Candlewood Suites because right down the street was prostitution. So, community redevelopment has worked for us, and I do believe we're the poster child for it. Our taxable value back in 2003 was $9 million. Our taxable value now is $36 million.
Wow.
And you guys get it. So, it's a win-win for the county. The more successful Palm Shores is, is a more successful and the more financially secure the county is. And we're proud of that. And I hope you will seriously look at what that $100,000 I got last year did for the town of Palm Shores and how much money you were able to get from us because of that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Comments?
Our park, that's a quality of life issue. Palm Shores never had a park. And the day I became mayor, I took a picture across the street. There was not one single area that you could see the river, not one, because it was all overgrown with pepper trees. So, I took a picture and I said, I want to see how long it will take us to be able to clear those pepper trees in that brush. And we finally were able to open our first recreational facility that's totally maintained by the town, not the county. We don't ask you to pick up the garbage, we don't ask you to clean it. Town hall, we were living in a mobile home. Now, we have a nice town hall, but you didn't pay for it, not a dime. So, like I said, we think it's a win-win. We have people, I'm marrying somebody at our park next week. We don't charge them a dime. We just want to make sure they clean up when they leave. So, again, we think that what we have done is enhanced the county, and we certainly think it has made people want to be in Palm Shores. Thank you.
Mr. Tobias?
Just for clarity, are you marrying someone? Are you the official, or are you getting married? I want to wish you congratulations.
I happily marry.
Okay, okay.
But I am marrying someone at the park. I'm a notary.
Super, super.
And they don't even live in Palm Shores, but they love to go to our park. And they asked me if I would marry them on our pavilion next week.
Wonderful.
And I said, I'd be delighted to do so.
Very kind of you. And I too want to see what, you know, that you have done with those resources. So, I pulled the budget, and is this the right one, this half a page budget that, for transparency's sake, is this a fair accounting?
Well, I can't see it, but we submit a complete audit and report to you every year that you guys have already accepted. You've approved it. We send our audit report every year. I don't know what you have, but if that's not what you need, I'll make sure you do it. Because, you know, I have delivered to you personally at least four packets of information.
Well, this is the budget that I, they pulled off. My other question on this budget that I received was, the revenue was about 3% off than what the county shows that expended in TIF payments. And I just wanted to see if I could get an accounting of that 3%.
You can get an absolute accounting. In fact, I think you have it in here in this report. But I can tell you, I told you before, our first check was $33,000, and our last check was a little over $100,000. One year, we got $88,000. So, of the 20-something million dollars we pay to the county, I think it's a pin drop to continue our success. The more money we bring in, the more money you make. And you know that because we don't have the ad valorem taxes. It all goes to you. There's an example in there how much Wawa just paid you. I didn't get any of that money. There's an example in there how much the church, the bank paid you. We don't get any of that money. Candlewood Suites, we don't get any of that money. None of the subdivisions in the town were in the blight study, none. None of those are in the CRA. All of those beautiful homes on the river, million-dollar homes, they were not in the blight study. So, I'm not going to tell you who lives over there, but I can tell you they pay a lot in taxes, and that all goes directly to you. I don't get a dime of that money. So, like I said, it's a win-win for the county to make us successful because you're reaping the benefits of that.
Thank you. And one part, does any of this money, and I can't tell by this-
I told you I'll provide that information for you.
Does it go to, and I think, does any of it go to the private business signage in your area?
The only thing we did, and I think I mentioned to you that last time, we did five businesses that were matching. In other words, if they put up $2,000, we put up $2,000. They had to make their own investment. And these were small businesses that were, let's just say, deteriorating. It gave them paint. I don't think anybody got a real exorbitant sign, but it was a matching grant, and I believe our last one, our last one and only one so far was matching.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing the City of Melbourne an opportunity to show some of our projects. I'm Kathy Meehan, the Mayor of Melbourne. And now I know why the prostitute, where the prostitutes came from. They came down in my area. Okay. All right.
I'm glad we have that street.
All right. You really don't want to know what I was doing out there. Chasing them, okay.
Me too.
This is, this is a project that's in South Melbourne. We extended our downtown Melbourne CRA. This is one of the CRAs that predates the county's date, I guess.
Charter.
Charter, excuse me. So, we extended the CRA in the South Melbourne area, which really needs some, we have a lot of blight in there, in that area. It's located on 2420 South Harbor City. It's known as Island Tile. The facade project was completed in 2016. The total investment was $150,000. The CRA facade grant was $20,000, and the private funding was $130,000 for the exterior and interior. And it's a very nice project. Next is our transportation in the Melbourne-Babcock Street Improvement Area. And as you can see above, the realignment, it's been completed. The median's Phase 3A has been completed, and we're working on a design phase on 3B. It had the, it did improve the capacity improvements, install sidewalks, lighting, water lines, storm sewer improvements, landscaping, and road resurfacing and rebuild. So, a good project. We still have issues on Babcock Street with the county-owned portion of it, which we're hoping to work out. Next is the Babcock Street 3A completed in 2015. That was Babcock Phase 3A project. The total construction cost was $2.2 million. $300,000 city water and sewer funds- Total construction cost was $2.2 million, $300,000 city water and sewer funds, and $1.9 million CRA funding. Next is our recent one, is the Inspiring Investment Melbourne Downtown Melbourne CRA, the High Line Mixed Use Apartment Project. This was where the old Melbourne High School used to be. It took us, it sat there a lot of years doing absolutely nothing except deteriorating. It did belong to the county, then it moved to the school board, and it had a reverter clause. So, it took us three years in working with the school board to remove the reverter clause. That was both on the city property and this particular property. So, we're very excited about this. This is constructed on developers' and city property. It's an eight-story building, 8,600 square feet, a first-floor retail restaurant fronting New Haven, 171 units of market-rate apartments. These are not condos. These will be apartments. Two levels of structured parking underneath, and the developer is going to help with the public parking and no loss of parking supply. So, public access easement is provided by the developer. You'll see it in that thin green line in between Hennecker Center and the new project, which, you know, people can park in the back and then go, walk in front to go to the Hennecker Center. So, in closing, I'd like to say that, like with all my counterparts, that this is a win-win for the county and for the city. So, we're real proud of that. Thank you.
Any questions for Mayor Meehan? Is that the last one?
No, I am.
Last, but not least, right?
Yeah.
Actually, I was trying to.
I'd like to bring James Marshall up, just in case of financial questions. But in general term, all that I want to say about, I'm Mayor William Capote, City of Palm Bay, and also the Space Goals League President. And I want to thank you, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, and the Commission for taking this meeting on with us, because I think communication is the key to getting through any pitfalls. I think that we could agree to disagree on certain things, but you can see that certain communities have their success stories. And like anything in life, there is no such thing as perfection. And if you're looking for perfection, then you need to look elsewhere, because that's not going to happen. There's going to be things that work and things that don't work, and, and that is the, that is the right, I got to go back and forth here, the, the right approach when it comes to life from my perspective. When we look at Palm Bay, the success about our redevelopment is, is the waterfront. And, and to make it into a vibrant downtown and, and to attract and retain competitive workforce focuses on innovation, and that's why we've been talking with Harris Corporation and other, other businesses in the area. Next slide would be, our mission is to remove the blight prevent and prevention, economic redevelopment, workforce retention, attract new businesses, and mission should be accomplished within the next eight years. And that is our focus. You see, the thing that I do have is about Palm Bay is historical data, because I've been a resident of Palm Bay for the last 22 years. And you can move to the next slide because I'm going to give you the timeline. The CRA, the B-CRA got started back in 1999, and we started with pepper tree removals and other invasive vegetation on US-1. Depleted restaurants, old shopping centers, we cleaned that. Trailer park, goats, chicken farms on US-1, derelict housing, source of crime, and I'm not going to repeat what the two mayors said, we had that problem too.
Oh, come on, Mayor. Yeah, I sent you.
They're moving south. Where, where's next?
An island.
Old gas stations and derelict multifamily structures, which were source of crime. One of our proud moments is with, in regards to what the two mayors were, were a really hidden point on, our castaway point was a source of issues for a long time, for a long time. And we were able to go in there and fix that park and, and get it to a point now where families can actually go in there and go fishing right there at the bay. And our concentration within our next slide is Economic Development Strategies for Redevelopment Aging Economic Corridor. And that's really what's at hand with Palm Bay right now. People need to understand that if it wasn't for the economical downturn, okay, that happened to this area and to the United States of America, Palm Bay would be in a totally different place right now. Because if I were to show you the different things that were going to come into that US-1 corridor, and we were the fastest-growing city, not just in Brevard County, we were the fastest-growing city in the U.S. at that particular time in, in 2005, 2006. And when the economic turn on us, we were on the top of the line of foreclosure. And you could go check this data. We went from, I mean, we were there with Vegas and, and other municipalities throughout the U.S. that's having the most foreclosures around the United States. So, we took a hit, and this area of Palm Bay, we want to, we want to focus on it, and we want to attract millennials to it, just like I know everybody else does here. And we have a timetable in regards to millennials and what we need to do for that mixed-use community and downtown setting. And I believe that CRAs plays a big role in order to accomplish this. I see what to my north, Melbourne is doing, and west Melbourne. And I know in Titusville, they're doing great things. I know they're doing great things in Cocoa. I just say, cooler hell, cooler heads will prevail if we do the right things for each other. And as the Space Goals League President, I want the Commission to understand that we move in unison. We're not segmented.
That's right.
We're not one community of point of focus. We're 16 communities, and when you're going to come to talk to us, you're going to talk to 16, united as one. Because that's how we stand as Brevard County. You need us as much as we need you. That is the reality. Because our taxes help you, and the fact that you're the governing body for some of the things that we do, we have to come to you. And if this is something that comes periodically depending on elections, then we need to understand that we need to talk. At the end of the day, staying silent, throwing numbers, it's a lot of numbers, I, I, as a parent, I could throw at my kids and say, "Oh, I overspent on this on you here, but you didn't do well in this." But the reality is, you try to work through it as a family. And I think that Brevard County is a family, and the 16 municipalities belong to it. So, we need to talk, and that's why we're here. And thank you for taking the meeting. And I'm going to ask James to come up, just in case any of the Commissioners have any questions. I'm good there. Thank you.
You're welcome. Comments, questions? Hearing none?
Just before we turn this over to Courtney, who's going to come to discuss debt service, there's, you know, listening to some of the questions and the comments regarding the commercial facade, residential facade programs, I think one of the things that needs to be understood, it is a matching program. You know, the private property owner, typically the small business owner, not your large companies, your small business owner is being partnered with. And one chapter and section 163, 345 of the floor statutes, it says, "As it relates to CRAs, they shall afford maximum opportunity to the rehabilitation or redevelopment of community redevelopment area by private enterprise." That's what they're designed to do, is to assist private enterprise. And here, you have a tool that's helping the small business owner. And I'm sure there's a number of small business owners behind us that can talk about how important that little, you know, $5,000, $10,000, it closed the gap to make a project happen. And, and then the other thing, I think Mayor Cormick stated it very well, is, is she gave three perfect examples, Wawa, Candlewood Suites, and the subdivision. All investment that happened outside the CRA because the CRA was doing its job, but for the reinvestment in that strategic, in a strategic manner in that area, you may not have experienced that investment that would have increased the county tax base elsewhere. And then, last thing is, even when, when it comes to taxes, tangible personal property taxes, if it's a business, the county's getting all those funds. So, if you locate a business within a CRA and they have to pay taxes on their tangible, on their business equipment, that goes directly to the county, does not come to the CRAs. Thank you.
I know we're getting tired, but I'm going to race through these, rest of these slides. I just wanted to quickly touch on why we go out to debt service. So, we hear that a lot. Some people present debt services being very bad, and, and yes, it can be bad if you take too much out, certainly. But debt services is really a cornerstone of government in, in all forms. We, we take out debt service all the time for projects, largely because construction projects are very expensive, and we can either wait 10 years to save up $4 million for a project, or we can get it done now and, and get that benefit to our citizens right now. So, projects in CRAs are often opportunistic, and that happens a lot with, for example, this is a picture of US-1 in Titusville. I think all of us know that FDOT doesn't go build projects on our schedule. We have to be on theirs. So, when we, when we try to coordinate with them, obviously, when we want to do projects on a state road with sidewalks, bike lanes, increased lighting, crosswalks, things like that, we don't want to do it after they resurface the project, because then you're clogging up the road twice, you're reconstructing things twice, and that doesn't make any sense. So, we try to do it together, and so then we're on their schedule. So, if they come up with a plan and say, "Okay, we're going to resurface this road in three years," we got to be ready with that project in three years. The other, the other issue is that by statute, we can only save up for a project for three years. So, that is a, I don't know why somebody put that statute, but it is in there. It's an issue that we all have to work, work around. People ask CRA directors, "What's the problem with the statute?" That's one of the issues that come up. Many times, CRAs do not have the increment to save up for a large-scale project within three years. So, it's hard enough to save up anything like $4 million in three years, but if you don't, if you're making an increment of $240,000 a year, obviously, you're not going to save up for that in three years. And probably the biggest issue is, right when you start a CRA, like the commons, the parking garage that Cocoa Beach wants to do, you have to start, you have to do a big project right at the beginning just to jumpstart the interest in the area, and that is one of the biggest issues. So, that's why you'll see a CRA just start, they'll get an increment going, and then they immediately take out debt service for a big project, because they're trying to jumpstart the investment in that area. We're going to go through CRA, the issues with Satellite Beach's CRA. That way, I could just cover it now instead of having to come back up here during public comment, which I know I'll have to do. In fiscal year 0506, Satellite Beach City Council in their CRA decided to apply some CRA funds towards the city fire and police service in the city. And in their mind, that was a decision that they decided that was a good thing for their city at the time and their CRA. And in 2011, the issue was brought up by a group seeking election in the city, and that became a very political issue for the, the city and the CRA. And in 2012, that group won. So, so to solve that problem, that city council in 2012 created an agreement between the city and the CRA to return the fire service funds back to the CRA from the city. So, in that way, that issue was resolved in 2012, because the aggrieved party was the CRA. So, that issue was resolved in 2012. But then, new council members were elected in 2013, and the old council members were not there anymore. So, that became another political issue from the outside coming in. And at the same time, I was hired, and I faced an audit right when I came to the city. I was, I hadn't started yet, but I'm getting phone calls from the auditors saying that we have no money in reserves. So, that was fun, and they were getting ready to report us to the state of Florida. So, looking at our funds, and I'm seeing zero money in general fund and $1 million in the CRA fund, I thought, "Okay, how can we move this over here?" So, I called Stockton and sat down and said, "You know, is there a way that we can send money back to the taxing authorities at the end of the year and, and make that amount of money match the police and fire expenditures that the city CRA spent and try to resolve that political turmoil at the same time we get reserves back and the county gets money at the same time, because they were also hurting pretty bad too at the time." The other, you know, the other issue too is, during that time, we, the, the city council in 2012 hadn't done anything with the CRA during that year. So, the city, you know, the CRA had $1 million just sitting there. So, that's, that's how we address that. After that agreement was created, we, we redid our plan. And I don't know if you've been able to see this credible piece of literature. It's outstanding piece of literature. But this plan, what it did was it outlined very specific projects with a very specific budget and policies that required us, if we went past the budget of that, we could not go past the budget of the project, but if we went under the budget of that project, that money that we saved would go back to the taxing authorities. It wouldn't be placed onto another project. We also put policies in place that if we get additional revenues in, those additional revenues would go back to the taxing authorities. We would not invent another project. So, we, we outlined very specific projects in our plan, and at the time we started doing that, the city council said, "Okay, once we get these projects done, you know, can we start phasing out the CRA?" So, you'll see that in the plan, and the CRA will phase out in 1920. So, that was the city's decision. If you go to Satellite Beach, you'll see why we made that decision. Our CRA has been very successful. The city's been very successful. We, we were just designated the eighth healthiest housing market in the state of Florida with, I think, West Melbourne being the number one, and we don't have any new construction. So, obviously, we have a pretty good place to live and a, and a beautiful area to live. So, I think we've done well with our CRA. We don't really need it, and, and we've identified very specific projects, and after those projects are done, we're done. And, and that was the decision of the council. So, here's the, the payment, how it works. In fiscal year 16, and this was your question, Commissioner, the county's TIF payment was The city refunded the $104,341 per the agreement, so that was our agreement with the county for that year. It's a different payment every year, but for that year, that was the agreement. And then, we also funded an additional $72,302 of unused tax money or unused TIF money for a total of $216,643. So, we basically turned, returned 46% of the county's contribution to our TIF, back to the county. We tried to make it simple. Back in, in 2013, we tried to just reduce the revenues, but it was very political turmoil at the time, and there was a dissenting council member that contacted the bank and ruined that for us. So, now, we have to kind of make it complicated. So, it's basically, you pay us, and then we return it back to you at the end of the year. So, that's an agreement of, or an example of an agreement. And you can, the reason why I say the bank, when I mention that, is banks usually, when they lend you money on a, on a TIF pledge, they want to make sure that, they, they want to protect their revenue source. So, they will be very upset with you when you start reducing your revenues. So, they were very upset with us at that option, and, but they can't control how we spend our money. So, they would not allow us to reduce our revenues, but they allowed us to return the revenues to you, or the, to return the funds to you and as an expenditure. Does anybody have any questions on this before I move forward? Did that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes.
So, going through redevelopment is better. We hear a lot of, you know, "Why do we want to, to do all this? Why don't we just spread the money out equally throughout everywhere?" And, you know, that's something that I hear quite a bit, actually. And we want to make sure that, you know, we go through why we spend more money in our dense urban areas and why we spend more money in our redevelopment areas as an investment. And basically, it's less expensive, redevelop, reinvesting in our older areas, and I'm going to show you an example of that. It also improves our image. And I, I serve on the Beach Committee for the TDC, and I was talking to one of our committee members, Commissioner, or I always call him Commissioner, Commissioner Sasso for Cocoa Beach, a former commissioner. And he was telling, he gave out during, I think it was Memorial Day weekend, where he was searching for hotel rooms over in Tampa, and they were about $350 a night. But at the same weekend, you couldn't find one over here for more than $150 a night. And part of that reasoning is, that's why we're, you see Cocoa Beach doing what they're doing, because they want to improve their image. They want to increase the, the base. They want to make sure that those hotel rooms, the value rises and spurs investment, and that's, that's the point. And we also, denser, more walkable development And we also, denser, more walkable development is better for the neighborhood and for us. And I'll show you an example of that in a second. This is, I'm going to go, I'm going to kind of skip through this, because we're trying to get through it. But this is a study by Berkeley. UC Berkeley that showed that household carbon footprints in urban core cities were basically equal to the environmental sections, the vacant land outside of the cities, and that the, basically, the higher carbon footprints were all associated with the suburban areas. And so you can see here, there's Houston, that little green spot in the middle, the red, that's the center city. And the red is all of the suburbs, and that's the higher carbon footprint of that area. And you can see this goes up more and more. Atlanta, same thing. There's Atlanta in the middle and all the suburbs, causing all the environmental havoc. And here, in Denver, same thing. You'll see there, there's little tiny Denver, and then all of the big suburbs surrounding it, that's emitting all of the carbon emissions into the air. This is an example of a project in Volusia County, actually. And this presentation was given by University of Florida IFIS, presented by Jensen Kipserci and Lynn Jarrett. And this was done at a conference, or more like a training session for planners, because I'm a planner, if you didn't know that. And this is a pre-recession project that was sidelined by the recession. They came in after the recession, you know, and they, velvet started happening again, the property owner said, okay, come up with some examples. And so they came up with scenario A, which is two dwelling units an acre, 50% open space, two-story, low-impact development, and the property taxes came out the highest. Scenario B, one dwelling unit an acre, 50% open space, typical property taxes of $416,000. And then scenario, scenario B is one dwelling unit an acre, no open space, big, big lot development, and came out with about $93,000. But this is where it really gets. So you see the, you get a greater return, obviously, with the higher density, but less environmental impacts. This is water usage for scenario A, which is your higher density, and your environmental impacts, water use with your, with your lower, goes, I mean, it's quadruples. Here's nutrient loads, obviously lowest for the higher-density development. Infrastructure costs for the project, the infrastructure costs initially are higher. But if you go down per household, that's your maintenance. So the maintenance cost per household is much lower than you see for a larger-density development. So this is where your, this is where our, our investments in higher urban areas, denser urban areas, give us a greater return on investment. It makes money. It's where we make our money. And if you see the property tax distribution, I could assure you that you'll see the higher property taxes in the denser areas of the community. Existing partnerships. Would you want to do this? Or you want me to do it? Okay. The cities and the county have always worked together. And this is just an example. We share with lifeguards. We have started taking over some maintenance of the county parks to about $1.1 million. We still pay MSTUs despite that, those park takeovers. Some cities are still not receiving a reimbursement for medical supplies through first responder. And through all that, we're still partners. We're always there to assist, and we're always there to work with you. So this is no different. So CRAs are the same way. We're here as partners to work together. 62% of the Brevard population lives in the incorporated area. 56% of the abhorrent taxes paid to the county's general fund comes from municipal residents. And this is surprising when you see the impact of Marid Island on that percentage distribution. And then beach cities account for 8% of the overall population and provide 16% of the county's abhorrent tax base. And this is where people say, well, you know, why do the beach cities have CRAs? Well, you know, this is one of those reasons. Sometimes cities want to keep on the beach some of the resources that we produce on the beach, so we can, our residents can enjoy those resources. Because a lot of areas, if you go through the beach, we don't have a lot of county facilities on the beach. But we do pay 16% of the tax base. Inter-local agreements, all of the cities as a league have agreed to enter into inter-local agreements. We would like to enter into those agreements separately, because we all have different needs and different issues, and we're in different spots on the timeline of our CRAs. So we would like to do those independently of each other. But we gave some examples of what those agreements can have in them, just as an example for everybody's consideration. But we would like to start with you all. If you all could, as a next step, kind of give us a list of your requests, so we can take them back and individually come back to the county staff and start negotiating those agreements with county staff. So that's where we would like to be, and I'd like to invite Mike up to close.
Thank you, Courtney. This is a big moment for me. I know that you will never be happier to see me at this microphone than you are right now, because I'm going to wrap this presentation. Couple of quick points I want to hit. I want to be sure it's clear, in terms of administrative standards, in terms of accounting, in terms of auditing and reporting and transparency, we in the cities treat the CRAs precisely the same way we treat every public expenditure. In fact, most of that work's done by a lot of the same people. And added to the CRAs are reporting requirements that we have to you, reporting requirements that we have to the state, and some new advertising and public hearing requirements that have recently been put on. So the scrutiny that the CRAs receive is pretty high. And the one, two other things I want to say. If you think about this slum and blight declaration as going to the doctor when you have a cold, or you have some sort of a bacterial illness, the doctor gives you a vial of antibiotics. And if you look at this presentation, you might say, wow, look at the success. This thing has really worked. Let's kill it. Well, when you start to feel really good with your bacterial infection, and you call a doc and say, hey, I feel really good, I'm going to throw away the rest of this vial of antibiotics. He says, no, you have to take them through their full course, or they won't continue to work. I'll tie it to what I learned in business school in the last century, which was, when business is bad, you advertise. They also taught us, when business is good, you advertise. And so the successes that these CRAs have had build on each other. They build on themselves, they build momentum. We, perfect example in Melbourne, the Highline project that I love to talk about, is a game changer. That CRA is quite mature. It's been there a long time. It will be a game changer. And so letting those things take their course, and has been said. Many of the CRAs are at different points in their, in their life. So just cutting off the antibiotics, because some of them feel good, is probably not well considered. There are probably other tools. The only other thing I want to address is this whole notion of choosing winners and losers. And there's a lot of conversation about this notion that economic development work, the work of the CRAs in particular, is about choosing winners and losers. And I'm going to tell you, I 100% agree that that's true, except, as I tend to do, I'm going to twist it a little bit. I think the winners and losers decision isn't the city of Rockledge with their $10,000 check deciding who the winner's going to be. I think that decision's being made in the boardroom at Skyzone. When they say, we've got a $2.5 million store, we want to put somewhere in one of the most thriving entertainment new businesses that's going nationally, this whole trampoline thing is going like crazy, they're sitting in their boardroom, trying to decide who the winner's going to be. And Rockledge is saying, we've got a little bit here to incentivize, please pick us. I think it's Skyzone who's deciding who the winner's going to be. I think in the city of Melbourne, it's Zimmerman Development Corporation, which is a sophisticated, highly-successful apartment developer. He's deciding with his $30 million who the winner is, not us with our $175,000 a year. And we very much want him, please choose us. Best example I could possibly think of, I don't think it was Brevard County's money, or the city's money, or the state of Florida's money that made Northrop Grumman a winner. I think they were probably winners long before they ever heard of us. And they chose us. And that made us winners. And we believe that's what this process is about. Now, here's my, my challenge for you. You have seated at this table, amazing political perspective on Brevard County. These mayors and vice mayor, 190 years, I've never even heard of that. They have an amazing political perspective. You have in the audience, city managers, raise your hands. And we're a funny bunch, but the one thing we know, we know how to solve problems. We know how to take the resources we have and push them out the other end of the pipeline with the best outcomes we can figure. Here's what we're here for. We're here to be your partners. You've heard that word many, many times today. I've stood at this microphone on three different issues. You're going to think it's the only thing I said. Fortunately, some of you are new, and you haven't had to hear me say it before. We're here to be your partners. And on behalf of the League of Cities, I want to say thank you, on behalf of the managers as well. Thank you for an incredible indulgence you've given us, two hours, to help you see these CRAs through our collective eyes. And we can't thank you enough for that. And with that, I'll close by saying, we're here to work with you. Let's go to work. Thank you. All righty. Any discussion from the board?
That's my room. You want to take a break?
Yeah, it's my room. Do they have a presentation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let's take a 10-minute break, folks.
The 10-minute break.